Alright, good afternoon. Um, I've been keeping with, I've been keeping with tradition and I'm gonna try to make this short and sweet. I just wanted to give people, I wanted to continue to make sure I check in with people and, and, and kinda keep the movement going. Um, I don't wanna just give you a little bit of information and then disappear on you and let you figure it out for yourself. So I wanted to give you a recap of, um, a bit of a civics lesson, but a recap of what happened today, uh, which is basically the culmination. I'm hoping that you guys can hear me through this mic. Um, matter of fact, I got one person in the room. If you can, let me know if you can hear me clearly. If you could just put something in the comments, if you have that capacity. I just wanna make sure that, um, I'm not talking and you can't hear me. Either one of y'all, people in the live, just let me know if the audio is right, if you can hear me. A thumbs up, a comment, um, you know. Let me know before I get started. Alright, so you guys can't hear me. Phil, Kurt, Kurt, I appreciate what you're doing too. I need to catch up with you, Kurt. I've been watching. Been watching and I'm a fan of what you're, what you're doing, man. So, okay, so I'm glad you can hear me. Thank you for the affirmation, brothers. I appreciate you. Um, what I was saying before that sound check is I just wanted to recap kinda what's been culminated today. I shouldn't even say it culminated because it's still ongoing. But I wanted to provide a little bit of a civic lesson, um, and, and challenge some people in the community on how we can move better, um, to get our issues heard. So, for those that have been following in the city of Boston, there was an issue around the special election with Marty Walsh being tapped, um, by the president to serve in his cabinet as the secretary of labor. Out of that came, um, the chance of a special election, which is, which is mandated by law, state law. Um, for that to change, uh, well, actually before that, uh, city councillor from district five, Ricardo Arroyo, who represents district five, which is Rosendale, Hyde Park, and parts of Mattapan, saw an issue with the safety around the fact that we are in the middle of a global pandemic and didn't see it as prudent for us to, uh, people as a community to go out and vote four times in one calendar year within four or five months of the part, um, for the same office. So, he put forth what is called a home rule petition. This is one of the few things, and I, when I say a few things that a city councillor can do, I don't mean to diminish the role in any way. Because I'm gonna show you, um, through a council that I'm a big fan of, that I like his work, I'm a fan of his work, um, that there are power moves to be made in the city council if you know what you're doing and how to do it. So councillor Arroyo saw this as a problem and he filed what's called a home rule petition, which was a bill basically saying that for this year, two thousand twenty-one, um, they would cancel the special election in the interest of public safety and public health to keep people from being exposed to COVID- nineteen and that next year it'll resume back the way it was and revert back to standard law. Um, this is a home rule, this same kind of action, this home rule petition has been done to ban plastic shopping bags in the city of Boston. The same tactic has been used to, um, to change the speed limit in the city of Boston from thirty to twenty-five. This is how it's done. The city council is a legislative body that comes up with laws. They propose a bill, um, or an ordinance. They need the majority of the thirteen member body, which is seven, to vote on it affirmatively. That then goes to the mayor, the mayor signs on, and then if it needs state approval, which these home rule petitions do, then it goes to the state level. The, the Boston state legislators usually just kinda carry it with them. Um, in the case of this, for a special election, it would probably be Representative Russell Holmes from Mattapan and parts of Rosendale who will take this on and file it at the state house. Usually everybody gets out of the way and lets it pass because it only has to do with Boston. So the reps and the senators from Situette and Randolph and Springfield really couldn't care less about it, right? But before I get into those, that, that deep end of the pool, um, let's start with the beginning. So like I said, Ricardo Arroyo, the city councillor from district five, saw a problem. As a legislator, he filed a bill that addressed that problem. And I'm gonna come back to this later, but I wanted to say that twice. He saw a problem and he took action by filing a bill that he thought addressed that problem. In response to his work, the community then started to work. So then you saw a lot of different community groups, too many for me to org, to organize a list of and name. But in this, in today's, um, city council meeting, uh, the councillor Arroyo did a great job of naming all those groups and they're, they're from all different pockets of the city of Boston, from West Roxbury to Roxbury to Brighton. Um, there were, there were faith movements, there were, um, there were ethnic movements, there's all kinds of different organizations that basically rallied around this bill and organized amongst themselves to make sure that this bill was in line with something that they wanted and the community felt like they wanted as a whole. Being the, the thorough councillor that I think councillor Arroyo is, he also then double checked when a, a memo came out from another councillor saying who could vote and who could not vote on this, this bill. He felt that was incorrect and rather than just sit and let it, let it go, he went to the state ethics commission, which is the, the kind of the ruling body in the state and asked for their opinion. And within forty-five minutes, he said he got an opinion back and was found out that everyone that sits on the city council could vote, there would be no conflict of interest, um, for anyone voting on this because they vote on things like this all the time. Well, not all the time, that's an expression, but they vote on things that could be seen, uh, seen as a conflict but are not. And the mass ethics commission is the ruling body that weighs in on it. Like you don't ask, if you have a question about ethics, you ask the mass ethics commission. It's as simple as that. Whether you're at the state level, um, city level, local level, and they, they give you a ruling on whether you can vote on that bill, whether you can own that stock, whether you should sit on that committee because maybe your family owns a certain stock or a certain business, they govern all that. So he found out that the, the letter that was offered was incorrect and would have disenfranchised, um, three councillors of color, uh, women of color who are councillors on the, on the body, as well as their, uh, constituents, which is in sixty thousand for, for Andrea Campbell, councillor Campbell, sixty thousand plus for councillor Janey, and, and hundreds of thousands that are represented by Michelle Wu. They all would have been disenfranchised had the memo that came out from the city council, legal council, or Lydia Edwards, or in conjunction of those two, would have, would have stood. Um, that's kudos number two for, for councillor Arroyo in my book. So councillor Lydia Edwards, um, is of district one. She represents Charlestown and, and, uh, East Boston. She chairs a committee called government operations. And I'm going through this in detail because if you understand this part of it at the city level, you'll understand it at the state level and you'll understand it at the federal level. And you'll see how they all kinda work similarly and where you can get in to fit in and make sure that your voice or your issues are being heard. So she chairs a committee called, uh, government operations. And that's where a bill like the one that councillor Arroyo proposed would go, right? He's changing the way government operates. Thus, the council, the committee's name is government operations. So she now has the option to call a hearing, when she calls the hearing, if she calls a hearing, she decided to call a hearing. It happened rather quickly. I don't know if that happened on her own, uh, volition or whether the community pressed her to do so. I remember, I, I remember hearing original statements that she hadn't heard for, for a demand for the hearing, um, but I think, like I said, with the community organizing, that quickly changes. She heard the voices of the community. There was a hearing last week. The hearing was reported as rather contentious. There were a lot of ideas being floated back and forth. But the hearing is allowed, is what allows a public discussion. That's what allows the, the elected officials to talk to the general public, the general public to talk to the elected officials. The press gets to listen in, they write a report about it, and there's more discussion about it, right? That's, that's, that's how general discourse and discussion, um, happens. That static might be the microphone banging. Um, so yes, the vote is done, Sean. I'm, I'm getting to, let me, I'm trying to build it up to a dramatic, a dramatic finish. Um, so she holds a hearing. The hearing was rather contentious, but there were four hours of testimony from residents, Boston residents. And councillor Edwards said ninety-nine point nine percent of that was in favor of councillor Arroyo's home rule petition. So they also had a working group. They can, they closed that. Couple of days later, they had a working group where it's kind of a closed session, but people, uh, advocates, electeds and others can come in the room and kinda work out some details. They added an amendment. Um, councillor Kenzie Bach added an amendment to the bill. Usually amendments can be problematic because they might convolute, they might confuse the issue, but this one was a light amendment. It simply says, and this is just my interpretation from hearing it through the meeting. I haven't read the amendment word for word, so this is not a legal interpretation of it. Um, so I'm just wanna be clear upfront. But what it sounded like when they pitched it was that it simply says that once the general election is had in November and the winner of that election is certified, whether it happens in November, December, or later than January, that person will be seated. So it sounds like they might be seated, right, earlier than the customary January sixth or beginning of January. They might be in as early as end of November and December to replace the acting mayor. Sean, a great point. So the coalition, there was great momentum and I don't wanna miss that part because a lot of times we think the elected officials wave a magic wand or they just do these things on their own. These things came to fruition because of the community effort, because of hundreds of people on Zoom calls and meetings and, and forming ad hoc committees rather, rather quickly. Um, and then organizing what they were gonna say, what their testimony was gonna look like, and being in touch with their constituents. This thing came together rather quickly. So today, Wednesday, is the regular day for city council meetings. This is when they usually vote on bills and then, and they handle their council business. So today's meeting, the vote was held and the vote was successful for the, in support of the amendment, twelve to one. All twelve, out of the thirteen councillors, twelve voted in favor and one abstained from the vote, and that was, uh, at-large city councillor Anissa Asabi George. Says she, she's previously stated she wasn't gonna vote for it. She thought the vote, it would be inappropriate to vote for it. Regardless of the mass ethics commission saying that it's fine to vote for it, she says she felt personally that she shouldn't vote for it. I've heard criticism about that, uh, from former colleagues of mine that think that that's a failure of leadership and that she should have taken a stand and that she should have put resident safety first. There's a lot of different people that might have a lot of different opinions on it. For now, I'm gonna leave it alone and let you form your own, but that's how the vote went, twelve to one. So now that that vote is taken, it goes twelve to one, it's successful, it goes to the mayor's desk. Mayor Walsh has already indicated that he plans to sign it. So that becomes one step. So it's done at the city level and then that bill goes, um, to the state level. Like I said, Rep Holmes would probably, would probably grab that bill and champion it at the state house level. Um, and then it has to, it has to pass at that level as well. That's the skinny of it. Anissa, it was a very interesting position, Sean. I don't know why she took it. I don't know if she's trying to differentiate herself from the other women who are the other candidates who are running for mayor. I'm not sure. What I did wanna highlight is that I was, I was happy that this, this bill was filed. Um, it's, to me, it shows the power that a city councillor has in addressing some of the needs and safety and concerns of, of residents, um, and being able to lead that voice. Um, I love the fact that it, it catalyzed an effort by the community, um, to come together as a coalition. Um, it moved people that, cause there were, yeah, you're right. There were not twelve people in the affirmative last week. So the fact that the community organized and galvanized so quickly, even in, even separately, you know, I always, always say that we don't always have to ride in the same car to get to the same destination. You know, we can ride separately. As long as we arrive at the same location at the same time, everything's cool. So I was happy to see the community do that. And that's where I think the power lies. It, it, it lies with our people. Um, so I want people to keep that in mind. And I wanted to use that, keep that in mind as you, as you move forward and you're thinking about we're going to have a change in government at the mayoral level and at the city council level, wholesale changes. Um, think about how you judge and choose and select and score or grade your elected officials. Think about what they have to do to honor their campaign promises. Think about what is your, your expectation of them, right? So everybody knows that politicians make promises, right? Someone in my, someone in the class that I teach last night, they, they recalled a line from the movie Shaters and they said, there's two people, there's two types of people you can't trust. Police and politicians. Now, I'm not saying to subscribe to that, but the line is fitting because that's a lot of, that's what I'd be. That's what a lot of people think, you know? A lot of people don't necessarily trust politicians. And I get it. I don't blindly trust politicians either. I gotta see them do what they say they're gonna do. I also have to have seen them do a little bit before of what they say they're gonna do in the future. For instance, I, I think about running for people that are running for mayor. That's a, that's a major managerial position. That's a CEO position. If, if you being a city councillor is your first time managing people and this is, and a staff of five is the largest you've ever managed, I'm not convinced you're qualified to be a mayor. That's just me. I'm not saying that's your value, but that's one of the expectations that I think of. Um, when I think of people sending a flyer to my house and asking for my vote, saying that they're working to improve education or improve public safety, my next question is how are you gonna do it? Are you gonna do what Ricardo Arroyo does and, and put forth a home rule petition? Are you gonna ask for a hearing to be called so that we can have public discourse around it and, and community can galvanize and, and share their efforts and the press and media can pick up on it? Or are you gonna say, well, the media picks and choose, chooses what they wanna cover? Like I hear a lot of elected officials, you know, get that cop out, right? So city councillors and mayors, they can have a bill written, they can have hearings filed or held or heard, they can do it downtown. Well, now it's not done downtown, right? Everything is digital. But before, they could do it downtown and they could do it, um, if Walsh is confirmed next week or the state house has enough time to pass the home rule. Well, all, I, David, I'm not sure if he'll still be around, but all he has to do is sign it. If he signs it as the mayor and once it goes to the state house, the legislation should still be, should still be fine. So I don't think, as long as he signs it before he's out of there, I don't think it puts the, the, uh, legislation in jeopardy at all. But everybody's waiting to see how long, um, Mayor Walsh is gonna stick around when his resi, upcoming resignation date is submitted. Um, so, you know, going back to how, the power is with the people, going back to how we judge and score and choose elected officials, you know, how good is that? And I'm just using councillors for now because that's all that's in the race, right? You don't have any private citizens in the race currently, except they did announce a gentleman from Dorchester. I'm not sure how serious the candidate candidacy he'll, he'll pose. But for now, I'm not gonna focus on that. Uh, I'm gonna use the councils as an example. Do they return phone calls? Are they receptive to phone calls and emails? How's their communication? Because if you can't get them to give you clear communication as a city councillor, do you expect more from them? Will you renew them as a city councillor or do you respect more from them as, as mayor? If they did not speak to your issues as a city councillor, if they did not speak to the issues that are important to your community, to your ethnic group, to your gender, to your, your whatever, the K, where are you identified, they did not speak to those issues, how do you know that they can advocate for you? And when I say speak to the issues, I don't mean it has to be covered in the, the globe, I'm sorry, the, the flob or, or the, or the Gerald. I don't like to use their, their proper names. Um, now, the Bay State banner is a great source for local news, but not everybody, they don't have a lot of print space. But what we do know in this day and time, and I feel kinda old school saying it, is because back in the day, I was, I was, we were new on Twitter when I was an elected official. But what we do know from the last president of the United States is that elected officials all have the power to publish their own commentary, their own letters, their own notes, their own issues via social media. So my minimum expectation of anybody courting my vote to be city councillor, to be mayor, to be state representative, state senator, you name it. Show me where you've spoken about my issues, where you've advocated on my behalf. Show me your Twitter feed. Show me your social media. Show me your press release on gun violence. Show me your, your stance on creating more affordable housing. Tell me what meetings you went to and what, what you asked for and what you advocated for. Show me some body of work where you've cut a deal, where you got a bill written, a hearing filed or held, phone calls made and returned. Something, a PSA, you took out some ad space in a, in a ethnic media, a smaller ethnic media to reach a neighborhood, whether that's like on Spark FM or El Planeta, whatever it is, the Bay State banner, show me some evidence of your work. Otherwise, me as a super voter, I could not in good faith elect you to a higher position. As a matter of fact, I cannot in good faith reelect you to the position that you find yourself in now. Whether I voted for this person before or not, they have a two-year contract or a four-year contract as their mayor, I have the right to renew or not to renew after that term. So what I suggest is that the community continues to organize, continue to set their values on what they expect for their elected officials, continue to share with their neighbors because you have to stand in some form of solidarity. You don't need to be everybody, but there needs to be some kinda, some kinda communication, um, where we have a standard. It's like, it's like if we arguing who's the greatest of all time. Basketball, right? If we're, if we're gonna say, we're arguing Jordan or LeBron, right? The debate gets muddy until you say, well, let's just judge it by the amount of rings they have. Once, once you set the criteria for the argument, then the argument is easily had. But if you don't set the criteria, we could argue, well, he's been to the finals so many times, yeah, but he lost a few, he won them all, he retired for two years, you know what I mean? You, you want, you want the conversation to, to not have all that, the noise. So what, what are you judging your elected official on? Is it, is it because they came to your cookout? Because they helped you raise some funds? Is it because they answer your phone calls? Just because they answer your phone calls don't mean they return the calls of the rest of the residents of the district. You know, before you say that your district councillor should be mayor or would be a great mayor, or, this, this is what I see a lot in Boston. You'll have a district councillor running for mayor and somebody that lives in a different district will be like, yeah, I'm behind this person a hundred percent, they should be mayor. But they haven't even checked in with the residents of that district to see how they would evaluate their own councillor and how their councillors address their own needs. Uh, that's, I don't like that. I don't like it, but it happens. But what I'm saying is like, set the criteria. A district councillor or councillor should be a mayor in their own neighborhood. They should, they should be behind their own causes. You should know, they should have a resume that they can stand on. A track record of work that they can stand on. And if they don't have that, then I'm asking you, what are you going to use to judge their ability? Can they manage an office? Are they receptive to communication? Are they receptive to criticism? Do they have a track record of speaking independently? Um, you know, are they truthful under pressure? Like, these are questions that you, you should ask. These are lawmakers you're electing. They, they make laws and they vote on the budget and whether you have a budget that goes up and addresses your needs or goes down. Are they gonna support? Are they gonna say, you know, we're here to decrease violence amongst our youth and increase opportunities? Okay, but are you gonna continue to vote for a budget that underfunds those? You know, saying people get worked up about defund the police, but nobody gets worked up about defunding schools. Nobody gets worked up about defunding violence prevention line items or level funding them at the same amount every year, even though you're admitting that they're not enough. Nobody's, nobody gets all up in arms about that. So un, until you actually have a criteria to judge and hold your elected officials accountable, accountable just becomes a fancy buzzword that people throw around. Until you're ready to score them and, and there are efforts going on right now, the same people that organized around Ricardo Arroyo's home rule petition about the special election are still in these groups and they're still meeting. And you're hearing about them and you're joining them, um, and they're still talking about how they will judge and score city council candidates. How they will judge and score mayoral candidates. And so that's important. And I think if you have a chance to be in part of those groups, join them. Otherwise, at least help spread the information so that we can have a kind of a set criteria, um, and move it forward. And in the meantime, I'm gonna say this because regardless of what we wanna do when we vote, we're gonna have a new mayor in, in less than a month's time. We're gonna have an acting mayor. And regardless of personal feelings, myself and others that I, that I talked to, the, the city's success is tied to the mayor's success. So whether that's acting mayor, Kim Janey, um, whether it's current mayor, Martin J. Walsh, or the next mayor to be elected in, in November or in the specials, if it doesn't, if this, if that home rule petition doesn't pass the house, it's not a done deal yet. We need to figure out how to make them successful. Part of it is holding them accountable and challenging them and, and asking more of them. But we also need to figure out how to support them. And I, and I won't go too deep into the weeds, but those that have been around and in politics know that when there's a transition, it's not always a smooth transition. You're taking people that know how the system works and you're pulling that talent out, but people are resigning. And you're bringing new people in who might be new to those positions, might be new to that kind of communication, uh, might not be well, like I said, might not be well managed, may or may not be well managed, right? At the mayor's level, there's a lot of levels of middle management. There's mayor, there's chief of staff, there's policy director, there's operations managers, there's department heads. And the department heads have chief of staff and then they have deputies. So how these people get named, how they get supervised, what their marching orders are, all of this is gonna be important. You know, we, we waited for seven years to see an increase in city contracts come to people of color and women-owned businesses. You know, will we, will we be able to see that change, um, during interim, interim mayor Janey's tenure? You know, who will be the chief of economic development? You know, does John Barrow stay in that position or does he leave that position? Does Joyce Lanahan stay in her position or does she leave her policy position? Who replaces these people? What comes, what initiatives are then pushed forward? Um, or is it status quo? Like, all these things are things that as a community, first, we should be talking about. And we shouldn't be scared to ask people these questions. I don't care what the title is in front of their name. Their name is still just their name and they got it from their mom. So it don't make them special. It makes them, it makes them an advocate for us that's elected every two or four years. So ask these questions. That was the, thank you, Sean, for putting that link up. This, the link that's in the comments now, um, is one of the action groups that are, that are meeting around, um, how do we, how do we just talk about it in a day? Community vetting of candidates. Um, and some people, if they have the position in their organization, will endorse, some people will not. But it will be, it will be, um, full of information that is easily digestible and easily shared throughout the community. And I keep saying the shared product, I think that's critical. Like, the more people in our community that are hip to how politics works, the more people that are in our community that are, that are empowered to use their voice and use their vote, just makes the community stronger. And, and I'm not talking about for electing people, I'm talking about for policy issues. What is, what does our congresswoman say? Her, Ariana Pressley, she said, "Policy is her love language." The things that have been done to us, the things that we suffer in our community are, they're, they're belief systems, but they're codified in policy and law. They happen every day because someone was sinister enough and smart enough to put them on paper and make them law. So the only way you're going to resist, counteract some of that is to be smart enough to take them out of law, to put new laws in, to put new policy and new procedure, put new procedures in. That is the, that is why I got into politics, to, to resist in that form and fashion. You know, some people protest in March and there's a place for that. And some people raise money and there's a place for that. Some people are knee-deep in the policy. Some people organize. Like, all of those are needed to work together. Enough, Enough MA is another great advocacy group that my brother James Mackey is putting together, um, that is working around policy, finding out policies that's beneficial to black communities in Boston and throughout Massachusetts. Because often the same issues that are happening in Boston are probably happening in a city like Worcester to black people and probably happening in a city like Springfield to black people. And New Bedford and Brockton. And, and the same thing for brown people, whether you're Latino, um, or Cape Verdean, another, um, another ethnicity that comes from the diaspora, right? So keep the links in the live. I mean, I appreciate y'all putting those in. I appreciate y'all tuning in. I'm, I'm coming up on that half hour, so I start to see that clock tick, I, I start to try to wrap it up. So I'm just looking at any comments to see if there's anything I, I didn't address. Um, I, I guess I'll do a couple of, um, shout-outs for my, for in the meantime. I do these lives occasionally because I like to have these conversations with as many people as I can get to. Um, but I'm also, I've joined, uh, Spark FM Online Radio, uh, because there's a black woman in Boston named Danielle Johnson who wanted to make sure that local talent had a space to speak about local issues, um, in our own authentic voices. And so every Sunday at ten AM to noon, um, I host a show called The Public Service Announcement on Spark, Spark FM Online. And if somebody doesn't put it in the comments for me, I'll put it in there in a second. Actually, let me make sure I'm on my grind. I'll do it right now for you. We just got a website revamped. Um, and so, you know, there's a chat room. We talk about politics, we talk about wellness, we talk about mental health, uh, we talk about civics. You name it. And I, and I, I spend some music for you on Sunday. So I hope you continue to join me there. If you don't catch me on the lives, you can catch me there for dialogue every Sunday. Um, and that's about it. Stay tuned. You know, this is gonna be a busy year in Boston for civics. Um, there's a lot of people running for office. There's a gubernatorial next year. Like, every year, something is happening. And so the policy conversation, the, the grooming of candidates, the making sure we have competition to push people to either do the right thing or get out of the way, it needs to be an ongoing conversation. Like, my man James says, "Start the conversations now." I'm gonna say, "Keep the conversations going." But if you're not having them, someone else is. Believe it. Somebody else is, uh, was having it. I don't think AP, uh, I think AP is in her comfort zone. That woman is, is an expert on policy. Um, she, she's in a, in a place right now where I, I doubt she moves. Um, but, you know, let's start at the local level. That's where we could, we can put our finger on the scale easiest. Let's focus on the city council, um, race. Let's focus on the mayoral race. Um, and the same principles, they just scale up, you know what I mean? The best practices. Um, the same things you do for a city councillor, you can apply to a state rep. The same thing you do for an at-large councillor or mayor, you can do to a state senator. So all these seats are gonna be moving, right? Let me just put this bug in here before I go. Thank you, Sean. I appreciate you and the affirmation. Um, the mayor leaves, now you have three, you have three open city council seats, potentially four if Kim Janey were to go. So now you have four, three to four seats changing in the city council, never mind the, the mayor's, the mayor's seat. And then remember the two, other two at-larges are filled by incumbents, uh, councillor Flaherty and Mejia. They are still gonna be up for challenge. Those aren't, it's not like they automatically return. I mean, incumbents often win, but they have to defend their seats as well. Um, and then you see other kind of movements going on. Um, you know, you see people thinking about if, if Congressman Lynch, um, is tapped by the Biden administration, does he open up, um, that congressional seat? And if he opens up that congressional seat, does state senator Nick Collins look at that seat? If state senator Nick Collins were to run for that seat and win, then that opens up the state senator's seat. And then you have, you know, you'll have a, a race for that seat between the state reps and the state senators and whoever else wants to sit in that seat. Um, and so these are things that are constantly going on. These are conversations we had when we were trying to get Linda Dorstina-Forey elected to the state senate to make sure that we had at least one black person. To make sure that we had at least one black person in the state senate. Right now there are, oh, I'm sorry, there's one, I think. Not in the senate, maybe in the house from the cape. But it used to be Diane Wilkinson. We have one person of color, Senator Chang Diaz, no, no people that identify as black. So you see the need to win more seats. It's always looking at a local level, whether, whatever town you're in. How do we win more seats so that we can affect more policy, so that we can change more laws? So that we can then benefit from them instead of being underneath them as we have been. That's my thirty minute mark. I really don't like going longer. Um, definitely sharing it. Please do share it. If you find the information valuable, please share it. I, it's the only reason why I share it is because I want other people to have the same understanding. Of us to have these conversations, um, and for all of us to be more empowered to take control of our neighborhood. So salute, thank you. Um, see you guys next time. All politics for local.